Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the general session of Montgomery County Commission. For today, May the 16th, I'm going to ask Vice Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Walker to lead invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Vice Chairman Sankey.
Praying in concert today with Paul, an apostle of Jesus Christ. For this reason, I bow my knees before the Father, from whom every family in heaven and on earth is named, that according to the riches of his glory, he may grant you to be strengthened with power through his Spirit in your inner being, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith, that you, being rooted and grounded in love, may have strength to comprehend with all the saints what is the breadth and length, height and depth, and to know the love of Christ that surpasses knowledge, that you may be filled with all the fullness of God. Now to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all that we ask or think, according to the power at work within us, to him, God Almighty, be glory in the church and in Christ Jesus throughout all generations forever and ever. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We will call Roe Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler is absent today. Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Vice Chairman Sankey.
Here.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have comments from citizens. We have a good number today, so I will remind you, as Callie Willis comes forward, that, Callie, you can come forward. We're going to hold it to three minutes. I don't want to be rude, I'm going to apologize up front, but we're going to keep it as close to three minutes as we possibly can, so you'll hear a little buzzer go off.
Hello. My name's Callie Willis, and I'm the writer of Silent Scream. It's a gospel stage play with dealing with anxiety, depression and suicide. I brought this play to Montgomery on last year, and I think the two county commissioners actually contribute. I wanted to give you a report on what happened. At the Davis Theater, we had over seventeen hundred people attend this play. We was going to do one showing, which was twelve hundred, but then it was so many tickets, until we had to do a second showing. And I'm asking the commissioner, I actually gave you all a folder today, and I'm asking you all to please, 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 help me bring this show back to Montgomery, because it's well, we had trailway buses coming to Montgomery, and once they left Montgomery, I mean, the play, they was able to go out and, you know, to different restaurants and eat there with their families and stuff. And I also got Jasmine Crawford, because I only got three minutes. She's the lead actor in the play, and I'm going to let her do a little snippet. And so, my character, Tony, I'm in the introduction scene, I'm having this breakdown, meltdown, losing my job, and I'm on all this medicine, dealing with anxiety, depression. So I begin to break down. Dear God, I need you right now. I'm losing my family, I'm losing my husband, I don't know what else to do. So Lord God, I pray that you give me you. Give me you. Everything else can wait. Lord, give me you. I hope I'm not too late. Thank you.
You're good.
And not only do I have Jasmine, I also have a younger actor from ASU that's also with the production. But not only are you going to get the part about anxiety, depression, suicide, you're also going to get our gospel musical as well. And again, I pray that you all will contribute these funds, so we can bring this show back to Montgomery. This show was so good in Montgomery that Birmingham is actually looking to bring your actors, some of the best actors from ASU, to Birmingham to do this show for free for their public as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie, yes, please. Robbie? Robbie still here? You're not? Okay, you're good. Okay, you're on. I think Ms. Jackson left. Did she leave? She spoke with me earlier, I think she did. Patrick Leiva.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm here to ask you all to make an investment in Montgomery and partner with Commissioner Sankey. I'm holding a check for, a copy of a check for $2,000, and here's what it says. Appropriation Think Big Program, Sankey. And then it gives the account. I'm just asking you to partner with him, because you all partner with a lot of things to work together and show that you all really are on the same page when it comes to helping the community. Now, you probably remember Amari Chapata, who was a childhood celebrity. At age ten, she was on Broadway, and she competed against over a thousand people across the nation for that role. Her mom birthed her when she was a freshman at Troy, and as a result, the girl came out acting and singing. And then after she was on Broadway for fourteen months, Apple TV picked her up for two seasons. I'm saying that this is an opportunity to invest in the arts and theater students across MPS, and it's very simple. Sankey has a vision. Get with Sankey and partner with him to let's bring a taste of the New York Conservatory back to Montgomery, because that's what they have promised to do. Once they go to the Conservatory for the summer for thirty days, they're going to come back and do a week workshop for all the kids across Montgomery who are interested in singing and theater and dance. And I'm just asking you to please give it your consideration.
Thank you, Brother Leiva. Sharon Rose, got a quick announcement she wanted to, I've asked her to make for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Simply wanted to share with you all about a meeting on Thursday from ten to eleven thirty at the Chamber. I think Chairman Singleton mentioned a couple of months ago, when we were up in DC and had the opportunity to meet with the Federal Department of Transportation to talk about technical assistance and providing information on infrastructure opportunities. They have arranged to come down and have a roundtable conversation with us on Thursday from ten to eleven thirty. We have invited, extended invitation to members of the Commission, but we've also included city and county staff who we had worked with previously on identifying potential infrastructure projects. So again, Thursday, ten to eleven thirty at the Chamber, and if you'll just let me know whether your schedule allows that, totally appreciate it.
Thank you, Sharon, for doing that. Florence, I think that's all.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of May 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
So moved.
Nobody wants to get paid.
Hello. Is this thing on?
Second. I got a second, okay. We did a second. There we go. Commissioner Harris.
Right.
Have you voted on this one?
Yes. I got, it says processing.
He's thinking about it.
Kind of wondering who else vote.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution to approve broadband study and sewer engineering services from the Montgomery Thrive Initiative.
So moved.
Do we have a second? I'm going to move the gavel, Vice Chair, and I will second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, let it be shown by a sign of hand. Still waiting on the vote. Yes, the motion carries by a vote of two, one against, one abstention.
Thank you.
Consider a 2023 Homeland Security Grant Application.
So moved.
Second.
Backup on that vote, that other vote.
Yeah.
I did not care.
Mr. Attorney, I think it, we need to revisit that as well. A tie is not, a tie is a fail, correct?
Well, there was an abstention.
Therefore.
Two, one, one.
The abstention doesn't count against?
It's not a majority.
Three is a majority.
Yeah, but it were only two, four.
Well, three voted. I mean, you had four votes, one was an abstention.
Yeah.
So two to one will carry.
Of quorum?
Of what you got here.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, Homeland Security Grant. Did we get a second on that?
Commissioner Sankey, second.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Consider 2023 SCAP Grant Application.
Move approval.
Second.
Consider a grant application to a DCA for the 2023 EV Charging Infrastructure Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
Consider donation of electric golf cart to Carver High School by the Sheriff's Office.
Move approval.
Second.
Consider the sale of two Montgomery County Sheriff's Office vehicles to the Perry County Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Consider renewal of a lease agreement with Williamson Properties Limited for the purchase of clay and gravel for the Engineering Department.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with the following changes. Commissioner Harris's contribu, appropriation to Triple J Initiative is removed. A $500 appropriation from Commissioner Walker to Alabama Junior Miss Distinguished Young Women's Program is added, and a $1,500 appropriation to the YMCA Good Times Program from Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
Move for approval.
Second.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of $5,000 from Vice Chairman Sankey to the Robert E. Lee Band and $2,500 to the Robert E. Lee Football Program.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we both got emails from Lamp High regarding championship rings for.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, you did. I'm glad you brought that up, because that's something we need to, Florence, we can still add it, we hadn't.
We need to add a designated, I mean, the joint.
Joint.
And this would be for?
Lamp High School for athletics.
Championship rings for athletics.
What was the?
Oh, that comes out of.
They had two, they had two different clubs that won, but.
Esport and.
Is there any question about any compliance issues?
Not from designated.
Okay.
We've done it for Carver, Lee, Brew Tech, Pike Road. I know we did a follow-up.
It's a problem with, from education.
Okay.
We can't do it from education.
I think that's.
What was their, their monetary request?
It's a.
I got the email, I'm just not looking at it. Total?
Wait a minute.
I don't think it was that much, Commissioner, somewhere between.
Eighty-five hundred?
Yeah, I want to say.
Eighty-five hundred.
And that's total for both teams?
Both teams.
Okay.
Yeah, there was two teams, I can't remember what the teams were.
Wait a minute.
It was the esports, and then it was, was it?
Let me see.
Something else.
Golf or tennis?
No.
Oh, we should, we're embarrassing ourselves saying this out loud. We all read the email and responded to the principal.
Because golf is still going on today, so it had to be tennis.
Let me see.
Trying to think of a spring sport. Or soccer, but I don't think it was soccer.
It wasn't.
It was tennis, I believe.
I think it was, too.
Either way.
He has, let's see, Lamp High won state championships, esports and tennis.
Yeah, tennis.
And, where did he put the money? Eighty-two hundred. Eighty-two hundred, does it for both of them. That's cheaper than.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we add that to the joint designated.
Okay, so.
So we'll consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with $6,500 appropriation from Commissioner Harris to Triple J Initiative, and $8,200 appropriation from the joint funds to Lamp High School.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Harris had made the motion, and Vice Chairman Sankey had seconded.
That was for education. So we need, we need to finish the education vote and then move on to the designated vote.
Okay, okay, so education carries. Let's move on to the next one.
Now you can consider appropriations from designated revenue.
Okay. So I need a motion for that.
Yeah, so moved, I moved eighty-two hundred dollars for Lamp Athletics Program.
Second.
The motion carries.
Consider a budget change request number two for the 2023 Buckmasters Expo.
So moved.
Second.
Well, I had moved. I had moved. You were second.
I did already, thank you.
Motion carries.
Consider budget change request number two for the County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Consider budget change request number three for the probate judge's office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider budget change request number one for the Recreation Board.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider budget change request number two for the Sheriff's Office.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider budget change request number one for the Juvenile Court.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a position fill request for the detention facility for an administrative support associate.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a position fill request for the District Attorney's Office for a legal support assistant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider position fill request for the Engineering Department for a County Road Maintenance Supervisor, County Traffic Control Technician One, County Road Equipment Operator One, County Road Equipment Operator One, two County Road Equipment Operators Two, and a Bridge Maintenance Superintendent.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a position fill request for the Personnel Department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a position fill request for the probate judge's office for an administrative assistant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for an administrative support associate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider travel training requests for the County Commission, the District Attorney, Personnel, Probate and the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
We have waived rule items to consider 2024 Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Title II Program Grant Application for the District Attorney's Office.
No objection, move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution naming the fourth floor Judicial Conference Room in the Phelps Price Justice Center as the Judge Johnny Hardwick Conference Room.
There are no objections to waiving rules, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
That's all our items.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
Deputy Administrator?
No, sir.
Commissioner Harris?
No, sir.
Commissioner Walker?
I don't have anything.
Vice Chairman Sankey?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to remind the people that County Commission District Four, in conjunction with Troy University Downtown, is sponsoring a mental health symposium on Thursday, the 18th, from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM. A number of speakers to present real information that we could use, particularly since we're reaching a crisis as it relates to mental health challenges all across this country, and of course, Montgomery County is no exception. We'll have Corporal Stephen, Corporal Stephen Wallace and Corporal Kofi Anderson there to talk about de-escalation and crisis intervention training. There'll be someone there from the CareStar to talk about Crisis Diversion Center. People need to be aware that that is open, and they need to be aware of what services are available there, so someone will be talking about that as well. We have a very interesting project called the Panda Project that is Jennifer Holmes from Central Alabama Agent Consortium is going to be talking about how we use robotics to deal with dementia in our elderly population, how the robotics, these animals, stuffed animals with some technology inside of them that help with, help our seniors deal with loneliness and isolation. You find a lot of that in our elderly patients with dementia. And then there will be, one that I'm particularly interested in is Kids and Ken. That's going to be sponsored by Families Guidance Center, where we're teaching kids, or at least we're making parents more aware of forgiveness and how important it is to teach forgiveness in children, because lack of forgiveness leads to depression, anxiety and hostility, and the more we forgive each other, even adults, the better outcomes we have in terms of our psychological health and well-being. So just a couple of, two or three things that we're going to be doing on May 18th, which is Thursday, and I just invite you all to come out and participate.
If you hadn't seen the mechanical cats and dogs that Commissioner Vice Chairman Sankey was talking about, Central Alabama Agent Consortium, where he is chairman of the board, they have these for dementia and Alzheimer patients, and the dog barks, wags its tail, and the cat meows, and you rub the cat's back, it tail flips up, and it's as lifelike as possibly can be for these patients. So really very interesting. A couple of things. Half our agenda today dealt with budget change requests and budget position fill requests, and there was no realignment of the budget for either of those items, and I have to confer, and with our county attorney, those are about half the things we vote on, and those are things by law, correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't have to vote on, but we, as a habit, we've been doing it for years. And so something I just want to think about, maybe going forward, eliminating those that have no effect dollar-wise on the budget. It's just, again, position field requests and budget change requests, again, that's not realigning any of the money in the budget, not having to go through every one of those just for time's sake, to allow us more time to do other things, so.
And the position fill requests, if they don't have to be presented at the. And the position fill request, if they don't have to be presented at the agen- on the agenda, it speeds up the process for a department to begin the hiring process.
And I know, like, Engineer George had like seven or eight on there. He probably needs people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll discuss that, I guess, or something that we need to, I don't know if we have to vote on that formally or not, or if anybody has any objections to doing that and, and prefer to keep doing it like we have been, that's fine too, but. Yeah, I don't know how we started doing that, but.
It's, it's informative, I can tell you that, uh, to know, well, what departments are, are hiring. And also those budget changes, that's very informative, uh, for me, when, when, when I'm considering the budget, you know, I could, you can, you can learn a lot from those budget changes. So while we might not be voting on them, I think, uh, that it's good information for us as commissioners, uh, to have.
Yeah, so we could get that information, Florence, correct, just not have it listed and we vote every one of them.
I've been, I've been an advocate of going back to how we used to do it, which was not having this as a item to be voted on. But I like Commissioner Harris's suggestion if we could have a memo brief of what departments have added what positions.
And it's, it's not adding positions. It's just, it would just be filling vacant budgeted positions. And again, with the budget changes, that's just realigning a department's existing budget if they run out of postage or, so that's all those budget changes are.
And uh, Ken had given us upcoming events. There's a lot of events happening in the, between now and the next June sixth meeting, so just wanna make sure everybody's aware of those. And the list is there. And then also from, uh, Loretta wanted me to mention that the Montgomery County Team Kidney Lovers, uh, had a great, great Saturday. I'm sorry I could not be there with Leadership Alabama, but they had a great Saturday. Our team came in second this year, up from third place, collected over twelve thousand dollars for a great, great cause. And Loretta wanted to make sure that, um, Florence and the staff for the county here and the county commissioners, thank you for your support in allowing the county to be represented. So with that, if there's no further, can I ask for move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Make sure you vote out. Vote out.